Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Virginia City Council of Chambers. This is a deviation from the regular members' orders. We're not on Women's Club Rules, or that's what it's called, down here in the secondary meeting room. There's some construction going on upstairs to replace some tiles and some lighting as a result of the damage done to the city hall a while back. So I call this meeting the order for the date's date is Tuesday, August 13th, 2024. The time is 4:30 PM. The reason is that 4:30 today isn't the election day. Lobbying party has been completed. Our city house meeting runs at 6:00 PM. In the event that we're not able to do that, we'll have to reset it from another date. So, that being said, they've verified the obvious debate. We want to present our number six. So, members, please take your roll call.
Um, Mayor, please.
Paulson, President.
Um, President.
Johnson.
Here.
Here.
Copy.
Uh, President. Would everyone please stand up to the right side of the table and join me in the pleasurable nation. My pleasurable nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. On this side of the agenda, this is a public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience who would like to speak, to say anything about it at this time. Seeing none on number five on the consent agenda, the following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councilor or citizen of the city of Virginia requests that we have to be considered separate. Item 5.1 is the approval of the press of amendments of the July 23rd, 2024 meeting. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 24-0 on buying scheduled bills. Item 5.3 approved ASAT number three to cash for construction for the 2023 street reconstruction project of 13th Street and 10th Avenue portion, in the amount of $6,017.2. Item 5.4 is approved ASAT number three to Minnesota Wardlooms for the Silver Lake A2B project in the amount of $11,556.75. Item 5.5 is approved ASAT number two to the Saba Latunas for the 2023 street construction program, which is on 6th Avenue North and 7th Street South, in the portion of that in the amount of $208,517.21. Item 5.6 approved ASAT number one to the Saba Latunas for the Silver Lake Trail A3 in the amount of $54,112. Item 5.7 is approved the following transit license licenses. Item 5.7 A, Erica Sundberg, SNS concessions, doing business as funds to go. Item 5.7 B, Katie Orso, doing business as Herb Sykes. Item 5.8 approved the exempt permit for a special foundation to conduct a last on November 21st through the 24th, 2024, at the Els Club in Virginia. And finally, item 5.9 approved the trail request for our library director, Julie Rennau, to attend the Minnesota Library Conference on October 22nd to look at 2024 Rochester, Minnesota, at a total cost of $817. These are the consent agenda items on the council agenda tonight, but also action. Uh, when the council Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda, is there support there by Council Mike? Is there any further discussion? Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if you turn to your page 11 in our cabinet, I just have one question on the schedule of those under vendor six month by the top. Um, there are two months, $1,105,000. Are those exactly the ones in July? So, page 11, top of the period of, how's 610?
What's the date?
All bill. Your call.
That would be for, I don't have the double check, but definitely one through July. So, are we currently paying, um, $9,300? Okay, there's more. So, are we currently monthly paying $9,400 for this service?
Well, it's maybe June, July.
Okay, that's what I understand. Yeah.
We were going to work through, because bills on the patient there. We had to work through care out there with her, um, and how everyone was, uh, counting.
So, will we be paying quarterly for this service?
No, no, with me, they suggested monthly, and he just kind of, okay, he didn't know how to put that out. So, they just find a lot of work out, and we're hoping that's what's, correct.
And then, what's, um, the, um?
I have a little wet point of justification. He had a reason why he was doing it, so. I think they went up the, the 400, two, and then they filled everything, and then the 4,000 was in June, and then something happened in July.
Okay, so we'll just get that third by, I'm sorry, I didn't ask this before.
Okay, I guess some, yes, you know, that was actually three months, so it's just a month as long as we need.
Okay.
Thank you, Council Paulson. Uh, it has been noted supported to approve the consent agenda. It's ready for the discussion. Uh, here in the state, not all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, or she carries. We've got a number six appearances. Uh, item 5.6.1, we need to have one scheduled to appear, but that residence chose not to appear before the council meeting tonight, and so we are all good to add to the agenda, which should have been, I really missed, but we are, we have, uh, the pleasure of having our lobbyists here today. Jerick and Associates, Mike Jerick, here representing the lobby in the room. He's here to give us an update on some of the legislative sessions that are part of results for 2025, and what he's asking for us to inform, to give a little discussion about the bonding bill and how we're doing that. Before, if you come up on, I just want to say, uh, thank you very much for being part of the fish on the ball tournament, uh, your group of people up in the metro area every year. You raise money, and for the last three years, on the state and fourth year, you were donating all the funds to the Friends of Public Safety money that you're designing, so we thank you, and that, and then for doing that, and then also for, uh, those individuals who participated yourselves, all the donations for the youth programs and the community for upcoming upcoming, so thank you. So, that being said, if you want to come up to the podium, I wish for Mike Jerick, Jerick Associates, to give us a little update. Thank you. And Mike, welcome.
Thank you. So, we wish there would have been more for the transpublician power because of, well, we might have, Jaxx, we're not, not yet, the construction delays. Another one, we have flood a little bit, and you can save, except 44, we have 24, so the fund there is, we're, we're, we hope for, anyway, very close. Um, thank you for having the other, uh, people for the update. I said about what happened in the last session. The end was the most chaotic I had ever seen. It was stupid. The, the House passed cash only though, decided to, like, get to it. So, Austin, you put in four of the members who's, that's it. And then they could take it, it was pretty, very high. And then, very last second of the last day, one of them, Chris, K. Wall, against, um, nuclear situation in the two of states. So, we all get caught up in that sad situation. We talked to a lot of members on the line committee, just asking last night, what's, and they're like, you know, well, we have the same bill for the cash from the hospital, which is tiny. And it became sort of obvious that we needed to buy, hand me on this side. Um, the, it's , it's, um, one thing that both chambers did is pass a very large on this bill. A nice subject, bill which under Minnesota constitution, each bill has to be come out. And what's interesting about that is totally different. Uh, United Healthcare recently filed a lawsuit against the state of Minnesota because that year wouldn't allow four month health plans to, uh, do medical, like, so it all depends on the courts. Now, do they clear out full bill, which is 1,400 pages, obviously, they don't, it's kind of a US state situation, but a last legislation, I think, which, I mean, maybe, or just the session. Anyway, that being said, that, there's down the arm. There's every quarter of the state has another surplus, and we just announced the end, and I don't know how to handle this, but there's somewhere in the 400 million dollars surplus which we give after spending a lot of money for, so, um, there is money for that, you know, the bonding situation. State credit is excellent, so it shouldn't be an issue, it shouldn't be expected a lot more. Frankly, a lot of people see, but they didn't need to, the state has asset preservation that they want to. Um, so, we want to get to city hall, and what's happening again, speedrunners and stuff. Um, we will have a new, also when you're here. So, we started planning, started suspensions, but, um, other than that, I don't really have much more. Uh, there's a lot of things going on, sorry, I'm in the last day, I'm running, other, tomorrow, so, it's, I'm in the book right now. So, do we have any questions?
Uh, Mike, could you kind of give us a little update of, uh, of the EMS bill and how that call, um, you made it out with respect to, you know, what's the 2021 to the 60 million that are governed, 24 million, and how, and, and your conversations about flood, of under the FEMA assistance program, and your conversations with some of the legislators, particularly, uh, Congress, Congressman Enner?
Yeah, so, as far as the FEMA stuff, I hope the information I got helps, you know, and, you know, always people in the union, um, everything, you know, they don't exactly move as fast as we all want to, but I think they move as fast as they can. This isn't the only area that the community has had issues, and the part of this, not as large as everybody wants to do, but, um, things are progressing as far as going in the soul fast. But, uh, yeah, that stuff, um, I don't think that number is as high as some other highlights. And you guys, do you have any comment yet, or?
We have none. I think we anticipate, uh, I think it's just, yeah, it's coming, uh, by December. Like, the fight for it in August is September, and then, uh, uh, it'll be, and has to be applied for, but in two areas, I mean, the EMS RV board and, uh, and then to the, whatever that, the part of this, uh, prior to, is in October, or something like that, maybe, so, I guess.
I think it's a little longer, and we can work out, I think, I don't think about this, I think we got the number, my way, but we all stay in some area from that. So, it's kind of that, as I was going to say, that everything happens, it's all the same time. You guys, however, you're, so, we're, we're, it's, I mean.
Okay, Mike, Council Gendage.
Thank you for coming. Um, and I know that the question is what EMS is, what we're about, big topics. I've been to several meetings where all of the neighboring communities and areas are struggling to, um, to join. So, how can we be as a council, where can we go to work with others to help or gather the numbers to present? I mean, we've tried meeting with other communities, but the county, is there, I mean, what can we do to help them? And it's, it's really a federal issue, and to get Congress to stop it and all, having to leave his office, because it all comes from Medicare reimbursement is a big issue, especially in the weekend of the outside, because, I think, a lot of people live in the outside or, or older. When, when government starts producing, behave what it's hit, and you can't not help them, you know, so, that doesn't mean that we're not, but it really has to start at the federal level, the federal, saying, you got to hardly help in some areas.
And staying in, like, all of it as much as we can, as long as we keep coming, coming, when there's only so much going to flow at it, and, you know, we're talking to members that want that EMS task force, they're like, we gotta, we gotta come up with a solution. We just can't keep putting barriers on this stuff. So, it's like, it's a question, but with that, you know, working.
So, how, how can we, how can you, or how can we gather the people to do this, to go further than what we've done on very?
Really, I mean, next year will have a new legislature, and the states, I, everything that's, uh, everything that was done before is pretty much known, like, some of those people who are in task force, you might have to do that next. So, that part, they'll have to play by year, but I think we really need to get, kind of, rates on, you know, uh, focus shots on this, Keith Smith's on this, and Pete Saunders up here. You know, David, Michelle, and other people who represent, and it's not on your customer, it's, you know, and I, I have, I have, like, a couple of new time, so, I know about a couple of that's similar, so you can see what even, if you know.
Right, and I, I'd gladly help on that. Um, we've got a shared fire service where we were trying to work things out, and I've got just some of the bigger meetings, and I think all of our areas, we all have the same concerns, and I just feel like if we could gather the numbers and somehow voice the concern of what is happening with the reimbursement, that our community, we shoulder that responsibility, Virginia shoulders that, um, and that's a big concern, that we were not receiving enough reimbursement to, to cover the needs. So, I would be happily, um, help with that. If there's anything, if you want to be in contact with the city, or let me know, I would be happy to go further to help with that.
Yeah, all, uh, contact, um, have a, the streets out, and see, first, what they, what they're hearing, and that's, we'll, it's, it's, somehow, so, um.
And I think that we're, 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 we're leaving the foundation of the Polish agreements with the city, with all the mayors, thanking for Congressman Enner, kind of pushing that area, uh, the, uh, the EMS RV board, which is, it's changing, but, uh, I think with the Polish agreements with the cities that are along with some Congressman, Congressman Enner, Congressman Stoller, uh, who's regional, and they'll be channeling to us about, uh, taking a trip to Washington DC to testify and to talk to legislators, our representatives, others, about how critical the rural EMS is. And so, I think the plan is, is to gather a group of representatives from, uh, rural areas in Minnesota, and take a trip to all of these events as a contingency to talk about, uh, the, uh, being, being, I think, I think they'll be in touch with you, and with our status as well, so maybe we can have a representative, we can fly to Washington DC, if they can raise a strip, and we can talk about the Medicaid, Medicare reimbursement, which is, uh, uh, the biggest common under way, so.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions for Mr. Jerick? Thank you, Mike. Thank you all. I appreciate you very much. Okay, uh, moving to item number seven, Senator Murray, one, the clinic release, the, uh, Danny and Carrie, uh, who can give a lot of their good bases, is getting closer, closer to the, the ground. Any more information from, uh, from your conversations about this sort of issue of representatives from East End, so I will not aspire to. I don't know. Thank you. Thank you, item eight. I'm sorry, Council Gendage.
Could you hold women at least, if they're sorry?
So, we, so, we do need to work on, okay, thank you.
And I remember saying this with your last conversation, Mike, with, uh, with Sam Stoll, when he called, and I referred to you as well, in many specific information, but he said that we've heard, and, and, and offered, and all I said to him was, well, it has to be a really good offer. So, uh, so, we say, thank you. Okay, any other questions about the clinic release? Okay, item number eight, discussion. Item number 8.1 is approve a second to the ordinance amendment, chapter 11 of the city code of land use regulation zoning section 11.30. And Jenny, can you just kind of give us a little recap of, after the general public sector issue?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. It would be, it's, um, regarding, if you're using a fence type in the front yard for chain link fences, um, from three feet to four feet, based on the fact that, um, traditionally, the planning zone commission is recommending approval of that, and that chain link fencing, um, is more readily available in four foot height and range.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council Paulson moves for approval, is there support, uh, Council Gendage? Is there any further discussion? Here in the state, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, or she carries. Item 8.2, planning a zoning meeting on August 7th, 2024. 8.2A, approve the various requests for Kimberly Masala at 709 3rd Street South for a fence height of five feet, where a three foot maximum is allowed in front yard. To move to approve by Council Free, is there support, by Council Gendage? Is there discussion for discussion, Council Gendage?
And as, as Jenny just referred, the four foot height, this is a five foot height, um, and she, she carries for a, a cat cow, and she had concerns about that, so that's why she was asking for the five, for the same.
Very good. Thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Here in the state, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, or she carries. Item 8.2B, approve the various requests for Craig Merton, located at 820 12th Street North in the city of Virginia, for a new 14 foot by 12 foot front deck, the stairs at 7.5 feet from the northern proper mindset, where 20 foot, 120 feet is required, that we have to take it, uh, individually, and so that would be, uh, directly, planned for, move to approve by Council Mike, is there support, by Council Gendage? She's ready for the discussion. Here in the state, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, or she carries. Item 8.2C, approve the various requests for Craig Merton, 820 12th Street North, to allow a new 14 foot by 12 foot deck at 2.5 feet from the east side yard set back for five feet is required. Move to approve by Council Free, is there support, by Council Paulson? Is there any further discussion? Here in the state, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, or she carries. 8.2D, uh, Jim and Michelle Cerino, 612 50th Street North in the city of Virginia, to approve a fence height of eight feet, where six foot maximum is allowed on the side yard, with the following conditions, the fence shall be constructed to meet building code. Council Gendage, is there support, by Council Mike? Is there any further discussion, Council Gendage?
And this discussion is also because the land is, so, if you want to protect people, and so there'll be women at the bottom, like, assuming, but that's why it's, it is that way, that he, the, the yard itself is slowed down, so.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. It has been moved and supported. It's ready for the discussion. Here in the state, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, or she carries. Item 8.3, approve the use of city owned block adjacent to the servants hub, for the servant club, the service argument, and your preference, on August 16th, 2024, for the Doregon Shins Cruise Night Car Show on September 21st, 2024, during the food shop festival. Move to approve by Council, I'm just saying, is there support, by Council, by, by Council Barzal? Is there any further discussion? Here in the state, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, or she carries. Thank you. Item nine, meeting of the board, for the, for the home meeting that was held on August 6th, 2024, the terms question of our city council meeting board, through our city minister, Grace C. Bass, Rick.
Thank you. At the August 6th, 2024, committee alone, we did have a presentation by Mr. Ricky Aaron, and Hillary, um, prepared against the ordinance, and then they asked for us to vary the use of the car to them, and we were referring the Department of Rent Department to make consideration for the date of the meeting. Mr. Perfect Hotel, which is our hotel developer, that we won't make the hotel, our chase, and, 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 and there was nothing on that, and we're all very excited, very expecting our own, right coming out of our, 2024. And then, Mr. Member Leader, Engineer Rickard, and S.H., was present to discuss with the council of 2025, the reconditioning project, and stated that the staff has worked up the spoken work for 2025, if the budget for the, we thought, finance burden, and we are hoping to begin, they do the project at the end of this year, so that we can get the work done early to 2025. It was moved and supported, showed to professional services agreement, S.H., the 2025 gave a reconditioning project in the amount of $2,6,300.
So, move to approve by Council Johnson, is supported by Council. Any, is there any further discussion? Here in the state, Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, item one, it's, um, I just, I have two residents that will be affected on, on the street self, uh, for 6th Avenue West, and 7th Avenue West, and they are on 6th and 8th and 10th Street, and they might be a little bit, um, curious about the assessment, I guess, process, because they're on a corner lot like that, and their property of us in a very interesting way. Is there any way that we can maybe reach, I don't know if, I can give you information, but, um, there was a public hearing, was there a public hearing now already, or is this, are we going to move over?
This is the 25, the, 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 the,
I think that brings us to our attention because due to where the fact that we hold that funding, which is in the contract that is put together for them, I mean, submitted. I'm held by the fact that you have equipment or people just sitting waiting for something to get done, but more than that, I wouldn't say. Mr. Reed, for example, they were thinking, you know, we might be done on this Wednesday. And now we have to wait for another day, so to make sure changes from starting a job that followed through their driving. So I, as my initial, uh, assessment of it was I was not in favor of this, but the more I think about it. I think there's good reason for this kind of part and putting in a contract just for the safety of the kind of factor that has potential for additional work that may not have been finished on time. Thank you, council period. Any other discussion, council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the city sent us, um, on the last week, the positive contract eighteen one six twenty-two types of delays they gave. Excusable non-compensable delays, excusable non-compensable delays, the delays that are not contracted or the party's fault or responsibility. And that they're not have been received by the contractor, the partner, not compensated contract or excusable, non-compensable days, excusable, non-compensability is included. And I'll look at you down on number nine, all other delays and not the contractor or the person's fault responsibility, which could not be seen by the contractor. And so I think that right there should be a little bit of a, it sets a very dangerous precedence if we're going to be dealing with a delay that either one of us could foresee, especially since it's a part of the contract. I would not be supporting this, I think, um. We should be waiting on the end and see what else is under contract, let's solve that.
Here we discussed this at the pool, uh, last week. And I thought, I can't remember exactly what, I said, and obviously on the lake, there was support of us. He gave us five dollars, a little price of dollars, so that's why it would be supportive, just in terms.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion, council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, when we discussed this with, um, Matt Reed, it was noted that there was the dollars in the contingency and the cost of this and, um, mistake and mishap that happened. So I was uncomfortable because there was funding, she paid.
Uh, thank you, uh, council Paulson. It has been moved and supported, is ready for the discussion. Uh, first council, aye, and then we'll council, council, aye.
I'm sorry.
Let's turn this up.
As everybody knows, I am not in favor of change orders. I really don't like change orders. And I reported on this one because it is a unforeseen thing. I'm going to put the finance director on the spot. And your judge will be half money contingency fund. Can we all just in that contingency fund, it shouldn't have to be ordered?
Um, council, this is a project that will be under contingency, generally part of itself, contingency. And we do the can portion. They have, and we will, every use, they don't ever just pause, right? No, thanks, sir. Now the contingency fund and the general fund, little bridge, bridge, you know, it's, 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 it's. No, you have extension, you serve, it's close to. So we're, we're okay. I need your help, neither party needs this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, council Johnson.
But I think why we just really care, we're not paying for the fixing of the water, but we're paying for machines to be a city, not a person for six hours. And that's what my problem is, is what happened at the end of this project, when there's a change that's actually something we need to do. And there's not money in this project to fix what is being fixed as opposed to letting machines just sit there. My understanding is probably, probably clearly from the works, fix it, refix it with our own mind and just paying them to sit there. And I think that's, I think that's a very dangerous precedence to set that, sure, if we find something happens that none of us know about, okay, you're not doing anything to it. So I, I just, I think it's really very, they're holding, um, okay, then now, not making.
Uh, you're welcome, I'm paying, council Johnson. Has it been supported, is there any further discussion? Uh, here we see none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Uh, call call please, I can't.
Copy.
Aye.
Motley, yes. Free label.
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yonich, no. Johnson?
No.
Barrett, Zellie?
Yes.
Motion passes, aye, two, thank you.
Mr. Reed also discussed request for a change order that we do see Canadian system of America was working on our sewer rehabilitation project, this one. The reason they were requesting a change order is actually just for an extension of time because the contract is was to expire earlier this year and due to materials that they needed that multiple day to be delivered, they gave them the extension to their contract. So change order resolution was moved and supported. To fully change order number one, the new system in America, the sewer rehab, this was the project, they were to allow thirty days into the contract, they had no constraints.
A move to approve by council Paulson, is there support? By council, beyondage, is there any further discussion? Here we see none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Here we have, I mean, we might have seen that very, very large hole, that's what this project is, so here, there'd be, there'd be, oh, it's very, very nice, that's, that's, that's. Mr. Reed discussed their question, Minnesota Water Works for an extension on Silver Lake Trail Base, Jimmy Project, raised, stated that the contractors are working, but haven't got to know what they have, but they expect to as of today, because they're going to water this morning. And they do recommend, and that does recommend, within the thirty day extension request from Minnesota Water Works, that's moved and supported to approve the resolution for their change order number one, Minnesota Water Works, for the Silver Lake Trail Base, Jimmy Project. And they're to allow thirty day extension of the contract.
So move to approve by council Johnson, is supported by council beyondage, is there any further discussion?
Um, I'm trying to. I was there this morning about nine, and I looked at four or five jumps, and I didn't look again this afternoon, but there was actually a photo of the water.
Thank you, uh, yes, move to support it, is there any further discussion? Here we see none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Reed stated that they have from the city, NSH, did review of the eighteen street north cover project. This time did see how it's in received, the first time he tried the water, they told us that it's ninety three thousand dollars less than the last time they offered it. Reed noted that the water is a time sensitive issue as the contractor will be awarded to his authority for container. It was moved and supported to approve resolution toward the eighteen street north cover replacement, tomorrow on construction, in the amount of nine nine thousand four hundred dollars.
So a move to approve by council Johnson, is there support? By council free, is there any further discussion, council beyondage?
Thank you, I know, just had your repeat. The funds come from? This is going to be out of the contingency fund. So, yeah, and hold it, then you said.
It's all around.
Yeah, a hundred thousand?
More than a hundred thousand.
I'm reaching that, okay, so that's where this is coming from?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Very good, council Paulson, it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Uh, here we see none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
The other question, there is some a little direction here, and it's search, but also rock the block picking. And, um, August twenty eighth point four, it was moved and supported to approve the use of the street, and the area stayed third street south, it's been nine thousand two eleven. Um, August twenty eighth point four, reports of incidents, and conduct of rock the block.
Move by council Johnson, supported by council Paulson, is ready for the discussion? Here we see none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
It was moved and supported to move the discussion with our community services and the crisis committee for the concessionary service authorities, the next community. So.
Moved to approve by council beyondage, supported by council Motley, is ready for the discussion? Here we see none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
We had a session regarding the housing. I'm sure it's a virgin, and it's moved and supported to direct staff that have been to discuss the housing process for the forward and to conduct meeting by support of the community.
A move to approve by council Paulson, is supported by council Johnson, is there any further discussion? I had a quick conversation with Jenny on the public page the other Saturday, and she's really handles presentation as information for us, looking forward to the pension, uh, any further discussion? Here we see none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
City councilor, he requests for the city to accept the offer of property in subset, and it was moved and supported to direct staff to further research this exaption with our nominations, personal ID zero nine zero 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 four zero, dash zero 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 one two.
So move to council Johnson to approve, is there support? By council Motley, is ready for the discussion? Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So why don't you still, I don't know, I'll just come back to us. Um, there's probably next to me, I'm just saying, okay.
If you will be supported, is ready for the discussion? Here we see none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
We did go into a closed session, discussed longer consideration of allegations against individuals subject to the council's authority. Over reading need, it was moved and supported to our city staff to secondly investigate, meaning of our allegations and violation of the city's.
So move to approve by council Johnson, is supported by council free, is there any further discussion? Here we see none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
I would love that, I guess, maybe.
Thank you, great. Move not in ten conditions, these are the worst, please, council, that's the issue, is not reported by the seminar today, council beyondage?
Thank you. Um, there was a planning zone meeting on Monday, Monday? Last Monday? Um, yeah, I can't afford, um, it was a very lengthy discussion, um, some of the items, um, the agenda debate. And I'm very, I'm with the commission to listen to all angles, issues, and make their decision based on that. So it was, I thought it was a very good meeting.
Thank you, council beyondage. Any other commission needs, move to post debate from council, council Johnson?
Uh, library meeting that last Thursday evening. So they run out of the, the same program, which started out last week. Uh, also, if I can say that, um, the elementary school will be, um, the library, the, the, the staff, you know, just to ensure safety, worship, and elementary school as well as being in the library. Should we, you know, understand on page, so we, we.
Uh, thank you, council Johnson. Uh, council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm not on the list of the board, but I did, I didn't alternate, so I did listen to you. And, um, I just wanted to, uh, maybe give a little update, so they discussed the, so VIDA, so I am on the VIDA board. VIDA discussed, um, the selling, so we will be closing on the fourteen oh four, only hopefully by the end of this month. There's practice, um, which is great news, but they also discussed, um, there was a public hearing, um, probably, this was, I don't know, the board was, I think, was excited to be back there. Um, regarding, it would be Seale Boulevard at Jack King. And so, uh, all legal things have already been done, they're ready for that. So now, um, this will basically just discuss that they will be, uh, will be, I guess, discussing purchase agreement with VIDA. Which had the money, it was a thousand dollars, and aren't been set many years ago. And that the school then will pay all the closing costs, so that was one portion for, uh, just still were discussed, uh, it didn't apply, forward by. Uh, but the second thing that they discussed, I'd also like to share is the facilities usage agreement came forward to them last night for the Angela Homes, that's in. And I, um, they take that to, I guess, they're having that facilities or activity committee meeting today. So it was tabled today, but I have a, I'm just, I just had an updated table at that discussion. But was this, did we approve that, I mean, we, we saw, I had those, so long ago. So they actually did have a conversation and approved, uh, the amended correct agreement, and we were requesting a three year term at that, we can pass what is that one in the contract? And that's how they were going, well, you can, you know, rock rich workbooks, so I think they're gonna, yeah, I, I think the meeting was something really exciting. So hopefully we should go that, uh, way into the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year and happy season regarding the school's decision, what they like to do, the pocket dollars and eventual. So that's enough.
I mean, you know, you used to tag on that, uh, I mean, watch it, uh, me, me as well, it was, so, uh, but there's an issue with security up there at the high school. They're a complex there, and, and how are we going to rest security, they're looking at some kind of way to have, uh, uh, some type of a security presence, uh, up there at the school. Uh, of course, we had a gear officer up there, but I think they have a different kind of program they teach, he told me now, that they're looking for somebody who can help. For the, they, they, they're just in the embryonic stages of trying to figure out what they want to do, security, all their interests is security. And I have a sense that they're going to be coming to push it and help us, and there's some ideas, and we're just wondering how that can be provided, and so at least, uh, planning plays, we are seeing where that goes. Thank you for that, council Paulson.
Okay, any other commission needs, I'm opposed to be disseminated today? Okay, we'll look, uh, to, uh, department entry parts, does any department have a, a, a report? We'll start with our library director, Julie Fergonski, Julie, once again, welcome to the city house, may you always look forward to all your updates, any updates you have on that, which should be publicized as well.
Well, as he said, we finished summer meeting last week, um, unfortunately, our end of summer fair inside has decided to raise the temperature to sixty degrees. Uh, but we have a fabulous summer meeting program, I will have numbers at the next meeting, uh, to surprise us this week, we have very exciting winners. Uh, but if you want the youth services person, everybody's invited on Thursday at ten thirty, we have, it is, um, apparently this is the height of the month, so we have a private, please, story time on the thirteen. Um, Saturday, we have a weekend share for, for, come shares with the folks who wear the rights and our creations, you can stop at the library, you can attend three and eleven thirty. And then, um, we'll be doing afternoon, the next one is basket meeting, the lady got the wire and yarn, just to drop them. And then the last book of for August is the story light of A J's degree, and that is, um, I was on the block on Sunday night in August, you don't have to leave the work, if you've seen the decorate series, um, you haven't ever heard it, just kind of hang out. So we are working on this, um, schedule for the fall, getting these baby story kind of set, sort of remember families, um, working out after, you know, we always have after school, then especially for early out, so we, we made some creative two weeks back, and just finding total awareness to promote. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Julie, very much. You pushed us pretty, uh, too late. Thank you. Um, department reports, great, and, uh, commission question, uh, right, anything from legal, no, they're legal, thank you. Pam, anything, uh, I'll see, I'm, uh, going back to, uh, to the top, I'm scared to go actually.
Pretty cool. No, actually, um, the primaries we conducted today at the event center, and things are running pretty smoothly down here, and they're just doing a great job setting up this morning, and we're ready to go at six thirty, and our whole mats are working great, and, um, it seems to be a good choice of getting those onboard for the, I just, uh, things will pretty quickly be posted, so, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hold it open till eight o'clock, so we have to go, so, okay.
Excellent, thank you, council Johnson.
And if you, I'll go up and talk to the regular, the, 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 or election signs.
So, um, election sign is going to be posted in forty six days prior to the election, um, they cannot be in the right ways, um, in her state or city. And the city has an ordinance pertaining to signs that not would take precedent over anything else as far as even forty six days, that can be posted. There is no ordinance, those signs will stay up forever.
Council, anyone?
Oh, that's, thank you, council, council free.
I did have a question about Thursday morning meeting, where Kansas, the vote, a definition of what?
Yes, I did, and he knows that, no.
Canvas.
Canvas means to accept the votes that were cast for just the council, because there was a primary for the council vote. Um, this will be the canvas, accepting the votes that the judges have, um, said were counted for each person on the map, for the city council. It's just a document resolution, and then a member will also have to do that once, um, the tablet is. It's just a document resolution, and then a member who will also have to do that once, um, the tablet is, uh, for the decisions.
Very good. Thank you, Congressman, anything further? Uh, welcome from finance, I share anything, uh?
Yes. On the audits, which everybody is anticipating. Um, did talk to the auditors today, and, um, they suggested that we do another extension due to, uh, staff reductions and new staff. And on our life of staff, um, in the accounting. Uh, so this morning I did, um, put in on this request for an extension, and I did receive, um, Brenton and others' extension that woke me up. But I can't be got through the state, or, uh, the state auditor's office. And, um, when I talked to the auditors, the local auditors, I asked the people to at least have a preliminary report on the audit. I'm anxious, everybody's pretty anxious, to see how we landed in twenty twenty three, because I did not hold up the budget process for twenty twenty five, and I'm ready to go. But I keep realizing to go before we settle. Uh, so she said she would give us, um, a preliminary unofficial audit report, and we go through the basic enterprises in the general fund, because you have it. So as soon as they did that, I'd like to.
Uh, so you brought the extension?
Did.
And, uh, the, we also, thank you for doing that. Any questions from the Congressman perspective? Okay. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, we, okay, I have, is that I did get the hot estimate for the updated helping masks that we discussed. Um, so we have that as a total for the new set at six twenty five. Um, the original, um, was a three hundred dollar cost, um, for those who haven't fully utilized. Um, so the total, brand total would be at a ninety nine hundred twenty five dollar cost.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Congressman Paulson?
Thank you. So we are ready for that, uh, for the meeting could be made, but I need to make something next week. And there is a line item, we don't have it with me, but there is a, I have printed materials, some other plating markings, I don't know the overnaps, I mean, it's on my head. And I believe it has eight or nine hundred dollars in it, so, um, I'd like to cooperate, though, from that I I M, uh, to pay for this, and it's really, so I'll be coming to make that.
Okay. Is there motion by Congressman Paulson, is there support? Is there support?
Support.
By Congressman Motley, is there any further discussion? So, uh, this mapping system, uh, it's all part of that, uh, motion we had before, it's set the date prior to September fifteenth, is a part of that, also, you're mapping the system.
This would just be moving forward to actually get those maps printed.
Right, very, thank you. Okay, will this be supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing seen none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed? Okay, uh, call please, Pam.
Motley?
Yes.
Reed?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yonich?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Harazelli?
Yes.
Cobby?
Aye. Motion passes, this one, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, move to eleven twelve, council reports, is any council, if I could, if I could, uh, update today, Congressman Motley?
Um, just a reminder, this Saturday, it is a special, very, half year time. Also, that, um, but, guys, there is a, for the, much, there are, you can still register, um, again, there is, halfyeartime.com. And also, there has been a kid race happening, um, it's free on Saturday, also, straight there in the order center. It's rated six through fifteen, it's free, you can set up and order your costs, and, uh, you say parents decide, or parents are assigned paper. Every participant will also receive a finish.
Thank you, Congressman Motley. Uh, Congressman Yonich?
Okay, just to try to take that, and keep bringing all that up, um, at the drug test. I know that people, they commented to me that they don't drink alcohol, um, so they don't participate, but I told them, you can purchase a non-alcoholic that, uh, first sale. And they have a lot of good options for non-alcoholic, um, beers and vodka lures and all of that. So we'll be discouraged if you are a non-drinker, you should still attend with us and file some of the other things. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Congressman Yonich. Okay, uh, do you like that? Uh, Congressman Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow up on the, um, the signage that we were going to have here on, uh, on all parks. Uh, making sure the lots are washing, that they can be ready for this, maybe in the park. I just want to follow up on my, um, making sure that, uh, they're on that one. And then, um, again, um, the, um, yes, with a parking lot, it's an all path lot, uh, just that may, we're not that, and what you're going to do is let see some activity there, um, some lawn therapy, whether it be a temporary or.
Um, very, um, they're, we're, we discussed a little more, like, they did put up some really great rocks, and I thought it takes a center.
Okay.
That we should get a little over there to move them off into the street locations. Perfect, we'll all force the car, and a wash house, because that'd be very, very nice. So, you know, just getting.
Okay. And, um, one more thing I might like there, um, I had, um, a resident calling regarding some signs on, it was eighteen, so you probably don't know. It's not, not eighteen, it's the, it's the one for the fencing, um, and we need to repair the fencing.
Yep.
And, um, there's a sign that's there, saying watch the playing golf balls, assuming.
There's a little orange and black sign.
Yeah, I'm assuming, I don't know if you directed or, or, or safety, or because somebody did it in my ball. But I'm wondering if there is something that we could post at the clubhouse to watch where the residential areas, instead of people actually not going to watch the golf balls flying? That maybe try to, it's a little involving people to, maybe really live in a mindful, uh, that role of residential office.
I think it was, it was a lot accidental, hey, were they?
Sure they are.
They're, they're all accidentally, yes.
Like, to prevent, you know, I mean, I know there's been further damage to properties this year, and we were supposed to get us that fence repair, which is not prepared at this moment in time. So do we have time frame on that fence repair?
I had to check with the vendor, because we did have a contract in excess.
Oh, gosh, yeah, I, uh, we're, yeah. Okay, so if that could be done, I just think there's a level of expectation in that we did make it through the physicalist, and all of this, um, pretty efficient. Thank you.
Yeah, we did, we moved some trees that were, that were, uh, uh, on my process, we were keeping up with the, we had a contract with them, we just didn't have people to come there. We had, uh, I don't know, I said, you know, to come there, so, I mean, it's, we're ready to, to roll these things, they're excellent. Thank you for that. Um, I have one, maybe, the, 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 Congressman Freed?
Yeah, I just want to give a quick Google up to the public books department, and we see a message from a constituent this, uh, week, Ospey, uh, said, Gary, this is what the garbage cans look like in our, in something we've done about this isolate. So I texted Jim Ospey with a picture that was sent to me, and a short time later, I see the text that said, done. These guys were amazing, and thank you for being on top of it, and seeing this city. That's not for me, but it's for those guys that came there and did what they needed to do, and it was well done and quickly done. And so, for those who are, of course, for, uh, responding, so.
Thank you, I didn't, uh, the same, uh, Paris Street South, so, uh, they came right away, just to kind of take them immediately. Thank you. Okay, um, I just want to ask, you know, for this, you know, citizens of Virginia, all the people that walk on the bike, for a little bit more patience. I know that, uh, the homeless has been a, uh, topic of discussion amongst the, I have a home detail, and calls I receive. I've had to go, uh, visit some of these, uh, concerned citizens, uh, yes, the homeless person is back at this, at the steam grid. The police officers are over on a number of occasions to talk to the homeless person, and to try to find a way to just to, uh, help. At some respects, uh, that individual has gone for a long time, for months, was in a hospital, for significant time. Uh, was in a homeless shelter for, uh, uh, for the maximum time, had to leave there, and now that's the place I was growing, and she's back there. Uh, and, uh, there was armies all over the place, but, uh, cities had to come together, and we went down there, picked it all up and cleaned up that thing, uh, that big, pretty girl, that were trying to find a way just to, this paid up. There's an ordinance in every, whether we have, it's, it's actually criminal ordinance, uh, there's a fine associated with that, but, you know, uh, just, uh, when the citation, the issue, and then the person who happened to have a court appearance. And then when the person that's just swapped, and warrants issued for the rest, and the lawsuits have to go down. And pick up the homeless person, take the homeless person, in custody, take the court, but can't prosecute because the court can hold, it's, it's city violations. So that may get pretty support, and, uh, so when there's a fine associated with that, wh- what is the purpose? You know, they, they can pay, uh, and, uh, they, they, they pay us, and they are, in this part. So we are trying to have, find a way just to accommodate, we have homeless people all over, just like many other communities do. And, uh, you know, I, I know people are concerned, and we, we always see, even one citizen is very upset about it, that, you know, the Jews won't, to land in a landmass as well. That's not the case, you know, these people are human beings, you know, we have to do whatever, kind of, try to help them. And I know it's frustrating, we've seen, uh, which are laying on these, uh, on these park benches, we're trying to find a good way just to, to get that, so. Please, if some of them are trying to find, trying to find some other options, because there is a homeless shelter that's available, there are no army shelters here in Virginia. There's no place for that in the world, and most of the homeless people in this community stay on the line light. They're, they're, if you don't see where they're at, uh, the gas mechanics, they've been, uh, uh, they've been removed. And so, and there's those individual pockets, and I would imagine that without the lack of, uh, 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 proper analogy, you know, uh, that, uh, homeless person on the steam grid is a kind of a poster person. For a little, that's, that's, that's a big problem in all communities, so, so please have some patience, as we try to work through this and find some solutions. So we thank you for that. Anything else to tell the people, Congressman Freed? Okay, seen none, who was standing during, at five thirty two P M, for next conference meeting, we choose the object twenty seven, two club, twenty four, we'll be back at the conference chambers at five thirty P M. So thank you very, very for coming, thanks for your hard work. Jenny, Rick, Pam, Sharon, and you, you done? Little standard here, five thirty two. Thank you, and good night.